I will call this meeting to order just past 6:30 on Monday, the 13th. It's a regular school board meeting here in the high school. Let's first rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so first looking for a motion to move this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Are there any changes to the agenda? I don't have any changes, can believe. So all those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, looking for a motion to approve the minutes from October 16th.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, questions, discussion on those minutes? Hearing nothing, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, round one, public comment. Start with our in-person audience, if there's anyone who has a public comment, just raise your hand and introduce yourself, go ahead.
I'm Roseanne Van Lu, I'm from Fairhaven. And do you need me to stand up?
No, you're fine, thank you.
I wanted to address the presentation from the guidance department last, at the last meeting. It ran very late, so I didn't want to address it for public comment at that time. So, as I've stated before, my daughter is a senior, and I have to say that, and Brooke is well aware of this, I've not had a very good experience with the guidance department at the high school. At all. Mrs. LeBron has always been accommodating since she's been there, I have to want to state that. But, when Diana was in eighth grade and we met with her guidance counselor, I was told that I wasn't really needed in the, in the process. She would, they would be discussing it with Diana, her schedule, and so, that didn't impress me at all, because that's my kid, and I will be involved. But, then the next year, her freshman year, it was COVID, so I, I didn't, I didn't get very involved with it at that time. Sophomore year, this summer between sophomore, freshman and sophomore year.
Can I just, can I just interrupt there? It's not a story, it's a public comment, so I just ask you to, to get to your, your summary as, as quickly as, as you can.
Okay.
Respectfully, I, I just.
Okay, I understand. Basically, as I said, we had a very poor experience. They did not, this woman did not ask my daughter about her schedule, she just put a schedule together. I had to step in, and it was very difficult to get through to the woman. She did not, she was not very forthcoming. So, Brooke and I have discussed this a lot. My comment is, as I was looking at that handout that they were showing, the three columns, there is way too much. Guidance counselors are supposed, they have two purposes, to help with the scheduling and to guide the kids to get to the school or career of their choice, and the best way to do that. They really, we have enough counselors at this school, they should not have to be involved with the issues, with, with the kids, all the kids' different issues. And I think it's really taking away from their main purpose, for them to have to be doing anything in that middle column. I'm not saying that they can't be interested in, you know, the kid, individual kids. What I'm saying is, when it comes down to those issues, they're only, the only thing they should need to be worried about is how those issues impact the kid's schedule and them going to the school of their choice. Will those issues prohibit them from going into the career of their choice? Do they need to go to the annex, and how is that going to impact their schedule? That's what they should be worried about, as far as the kids issued, issues. Not all that stuff that they were, they had listed in that middle column, and I'm afraid I, I don't have that, that handout. But, I, I just think, I just think that we're failing the kids because we're putting too much onto these, onto the guidance counselors. I also have to say one more thing. In the last year and a half, since, guidance counselor's name.
David Tracy.
The one with the two last names.
Tracy.
Since she's been, has come, I have noticed that she has been more involved. She has contacted Diana's guidance counselor at Stafford to make sure all the credits were where they needed to be. I've seen Counselor's, Counselor's Corner, that's been a great addition. I think they're moving in the right direction, but I think that the school board, since they're the ones who established the responsibilities for the guidance counselors back in 2018, did you say?
Yeah.
In 2018, since you guys were, as the board, were the ones who established the responsibilities of those positions, I think it's kind of up to you guys to restructure. That's my statement.
Thank you for your comment. Are there other comments, public comments here in person tonight? This is for the public, Christine.
All right.
Turning to the online audience, is there anyone who has a public comment? Attending virtually, please unmute and identify yourself. Okay, thank you. Moving on next to correspondence. All right, so a few, a few things to discuss here under correspondence. The first, and Cheryl had mentioned this in the finance committee meeting prior, there is a webinar tomorrow at 12 noon being put on by the superintendent's association, is that correct?
Yes, Vermont, Vermont School Boards Association and Vermont Superintendent's Association.
And it just speaks to Act 127 and pupil weighting, and how that impacts school finance. So I believe Brooke sent out a registration invite to all, you're certainly welcome to attend that, it would be beneficial.
And even if you register and can't attend, you'll get the recording afterwards if you registered, so you should register.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Two other bits of correspondence and recognition, we have two of our educators who are going to be recognized next week in Burlington.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, I'm sorry. In Burlington, they'll be receiving UVM Teacher of the Year. I'm just going to read a quick little bio on each of those individuals. The first is Shannon Mead, who has been with the district for 17 years. She's been a special educator for the past seven. Four and a half years ago, over a vacation, Shannon stepped up to take over the alternative, alternative program. She has run an alternative program with some of our district's most challenging students. Shannon has thrived in this role, and our students have thrived because of her. Shannon is adept at instruction and all subject areas, and most particularly with social and emotional needs. Her instructional strategies make all the difference for our students. She also skillfully manages the support staff who assist her with the program. Shannon makes learning accessible to all her students, and has many that, and has made that accessibility a priority in all she does. Shannon has also been a mentor to new special educators and other new teachers for several years. She devotes the same dedication to this role as she does her students. Congratulations on the well-deserved recognition to Shannon. Secondly, Nathan Morris, who has been a high school science and mathematics teacher at Fairhaven, middle and high school for the past 13 years. He has taught grades nine through 12, covering topics such as AP Physics, Physical Science, Earth Science, Algebra, Statistics, Business Math, and Geometry. No matter the content, Nate actively engages his students through dynamic experiments and projects. He challenges each of his students while also building positive relationships as a role model that show empathy, understanding, acceptance, and acceptance towards everyone. Nate volunteers his time continuously to the benefit of his school and community. He is an excellent colleague that offers support to his fellow educators. Nate works hard to open his practice for others to see. He is a true leader amongst his peers and an exceptional teacher that will continue to influence generations of students. So I just wanted to recognize and congratulate him. And I believe you'll be attending the ceremony.
Yes, Ben, Bonnie Lennyhan and myself are going tomorrow.
Okay. At the last meeting, there was just some general questions from the board about how best to respond to correspondence when it's directed to the entire board. Should we do, how should we respond, et cetera? So I just wanted to address that question that came up, and of course, I did, you know, discuss this with the board attorney, and I guess for the sake of simplicity, you know, I as the board chair, or anyone, can't really tell you how to respond, or whether or not you should respond or not, but I really think it ought to be standard practice that you should not respond at all, and, and simply just assume that the board chair has also read the correspondence that you've received, and if the board chair determines that it's relevant and appropriate, that that correspondence could be added to a future meeting as an agenda item. So that's how I respond to that, and it just gets really messy if people reply, reply all, then a, you know, it could trigger a quorum or an official meeting, so I think it's best to just kind of ignore the correspondence, and if the board chair determines that it's significant, that he or she will bring it up at a next meeting. And this is, this is a decision that's really for the board chair to make. I don't plan on being board chair forever, so the next person who's in this position will have that same authority to do things differently or the same. And then lastly, responding correspondence, again, it's, it's just been advised kind of along the lines of the point that I just made, that there will not be a regularly occurring correspondence item on our agenda. If something comes to my attention, or another board's, board member's attention, that warrants discussion, then we'll just include that as an agenda item on that meeting, okay? Okay. All right, so, excuse me, the finance committee met prior to this meeting, it was a long meeting, about an hour and a half. Cheryl, you did a great job, I just want to thank you for getting all those materials prepared for us, and really explaining to the finance committee some of the complexities that we're going to be dealing with. I'll turn it over now to the chair, Glenn, for a quick summary.
Okay, so.
You can do it quickly, right?
I will try. Yeah, so, the bulk of our discussion had to do with Act 127, which is the first year that that is going to affect our budget process, and for those of you who don't know, it all has to do with the weighting of students. So the old equalized pupil count is a thing of the past, they've now, I'm not even going to try, it's given it a new name that we don't even know how to do.
I did cover it, I think it was August, my August report, you can go back to that.
But, with, with that, the way it is, Slate Valley is, is a beneficiary of that, the new weighting. It greatly increases our student counts. With it comes guardrails for our budgeting process, because the one thing that this is intended to do is to create more revenue for us to invest in our children, not to use that to decrease tax rates. So in this act, they've thrown some guardrails up that if you, they're looking for a 10% cap on increases in expenditure budgets, and if you can stay under 10%, there, you don't go into like the penalty phase, but they're also capping tax rate increases at 5% if you stay under the 10% increase in expenditures. So if, theoretically, if our expenditures go up 9%, and it's going to raise the tax rate 7, we pay, we, we see a 5% increase in our tax rate, the state reimburses the district for the rest. If we go above 10%, that 5% cap is gone, and we're going to eat the whole cost of the increase. Unfortunately, as we start down the budgeting process, two key numbers, one is never available until long after the budget is passed, and that's the yield, and we don't know what our equalized, our new student count will be, hopefully by early December, because that's going to affect a lot of things. So we did see some preliminary numbers. The preliminary numbers do keep us under the 10%, but we'll, you know, this is still very, 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 very early in this process, and a lot of things could change. The one thing that, in staying under that 10%, that it does do, it really reduces the amount of money that can go toward infrastructure repairs. You know, as, as Chris alluded to, you know, we could spend 18, was it 18 million tomorrow to fix what needs to be fixed in our buildings? We know that that's not going to happen, so more on that to come.
So I don't know if anybody has any questions.
And that, that 5% cap does not include the town tax rate, that's just the school tax rate.
Correct.
Correct.
It doesn't include the impacts of the CLA.
Right.
It doesn't, yeah, the CLA, but it also doesn't include whatever your, your individual town decides to do, if they decide to purchase new trucks or whatever. That's, that's the municipal part, we've got no, no control over that. I mean, ultimately, the, the two get divided. I know there has been discussion in the past, and it's never gotten very far, about towns actually sending out separate bills, one for the municipal, one for the, it's just going to create more, more problems and more, more costs, so that's not, that's where we're at right now. Anybody else?
I'll just say, Glenn, I mean, the numbers are ultimately going to fall where they fall, but the burden of explaining this to our population to hopefully get a positive vote is going to fall upon us, so, and that's why it's important, I think, to attend a webinar like tomorrow, so you can just understand the mechanics a little bit better, because ultimately, you're going to have to explain this to your friends and family and whatnot, people within the community, so.
Yeah, and as we had discussed at, at, in the finance committee, I don't know if anybody in the legislature even really knows what the impacts are of some of the things that they pass, or the mechanics of it. You know, we just, it's one of those things that come down from the top that we, leave us to deal with.
So, I do have a question. Will we be privy to, as we probably have in the past, but the losses, like we're, we're gaining, correct, as SU?
The winners and losers.
Of SU is just CNN. So this is correct, though?
This is.
Well, it's likely that.
That's an indication of the winners and the losers.
I don't think we necessarily want to.
Well, I think we might want to.
Think about it, Mike.
Well, yes, and I.
Beneficiaries.
What I meant, yeah, I don't like the term winners and losers.
A talking point.
Yes.
Yes.
Because the whole idea is this equalization of education.
Right.
And it's very challenging, when taxpayers are paying a lot of money, to get people to understand that the whole rationale for the, you know, additional money, if you will, is to put it into education, and then be able to have some kind of a metric to ensure that our students are doing as well, if not better, than other students, family of students, yah, yah, you know, all that in Vermont.
And so, correct me if I misspeak here, Cheryl, but, so when they applied the, the new weighting, kind of as, as an exercise to fiscal year 24 budget numbers, the average spending per student in the state was $12,940.
Per equalized student.
Per equalized student.
It's not like a.
Yeah, okay.
Not a.
Slate Valley was at 11,298.
We're the 26th lowest.
Lowest in the state out of the 122.
122.
122, we're at number 26.
Last in the county.
And we're the lowest in the county, yes.
Yes. So, we do have, you know, luckily for us, you know, our students with this new weighting, our students kind of count more, if you want to.
Right.
But we also have an increase of, was it 60 students or 40 students?
48 students.
Students, you know, there are actually physical bodies coming through the doors this year compared to last year. So those two things really benefit us in the whole taxing thing. So, we just have to see where these numbers shake out, as we get more numbers from the You know, and that's an unfortunate thing, because we're making assumptions that we're presenting to the voters based on our best estimates, but like, you know, the legislature sets the yield in May, we've all already voted on our budget, so if they change it from what we, the numbers we use, it can either have a positive or negative effect on the tax rate, because it, those numbers changed after people had approved the budget.
John, you have a question?
Yes, I do. So, this is still nice and early. Okay, every year, we sit through this budget presentation, we see it as a board, then we do it for the public. Can we simplify that this year? I mean, we're trying to, we're going to be trying to explain the difference in equalized pupils. You know, normally, we go through some, couple of slides of the CLA, okay, by this point, if people don't understand the CLA, they're not going to understand it. And, you know, we put in a lot of graphs and charts that honestly, you can't read, you know, on the PowerPoint if you're sitting in the audience. It'd be nice if we could reformat this into a simpler manner, so that people do understand it, and, and just glaze over, you know, halfway through the presentation.
We can try, I think sometimes, though, we want to make sure we're being transparent, and if we simplify it too much, we lose that transparency and the message, so that's also.
We need to be transparent, but you know, last year, there were two different line graphs that basically you couldn't read.
Yeah, I know, I get it.
And we always have them available on the website, so you can.
Right, I mean, if somebody wants to dig in, go for it.
Granted, it's hard, and when they're displayed, it's hard to see them, but we have them, they're on the website, they're linked, they're distributed, and I'm happy to do less. You know, it's, some of it is trying to kind of walk people through how you go from the budget, and how you end up at a tax rate, you know, and how it all comes together, and in order to, I mean, I try to explain it as simply as I can, but it is complicated, and it is sort of a step by step, you go, you start here, and this is where you end up. I mean, we can skip a lot of that in the middle, because, you know, the thing we sort of struggle is, we'll talk about the equalized tax rate, and I don't want to take up too much more time. We talk about the district equalized tax rate, but then the common level appraisal is, gets applied in each town, and that's the tax rate that each town sees, and it's different. And so it's always kind of dealing with that. Why are we talking about this tax rate, and then why am I seeing this other tax rate? So, it's, we not, you know, we're always trying to thread the needle between trying to help people understand how we got from here to there, but, or, you know, we can keep doing the ways, or do brief ones and long ones, you know, we can do the, you know, the short version and the extended version, maybe for people that want to.
And like with the CLA, it's good to mention it, but you know, in the presentation that we put on the website, you know, put in the links, the state has a very good animated presentation on how the CLA works.
Okay.
You know, and, and if people really want to know, they can look at it.
You know, and the, I guess the one thing, the other thing that we did talk about is the fact that we're in that moratorium phase, because if you remember, for a number of years, we had to put, you know, in the warning, this is our expenditure budget, which results in an educational spending, so like, there was one year, our total expenditures were less, but because we had fewer students, our spending per student increased, and so you had to report that as so many percent increase over the previous year per student, even though you were actually spending less money, which was a kind of a little deceiving some people. That part of the wording is out for the next four years, and so it's just, this is what our expenditures, we're looking to raise money to cover these expenditures for budget year. So that may alleviate a little bit of the confusion, because really, you can't, you can try to fill numbers in, but with this new weighting study with Act 127, you can't really compare fiscal year '25 budget to '24s, because you're using totally different numbers for student numbers and everything. So, we're kind of in that transition phase.
Okay.
So, and then to move on, we'll go, jump into the warrants, and, so I would make a motion to approve expenditures in the amount of $3,255,824.65.
Second.
Any questions on council payable bills? Hearing nothing? All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve capital reserve expenses in the amount of $93,828.63.
Second.
Any questions on capital reserve? Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve food service expenditures in the amount of $115,570.43.
Second.
Any questions on food service? Hearing nothing? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve grant expenses in the amount of $146,432.52.
Second.
Any questions on grant expenditures? Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve high school student activity expenses in the amount of $3,863.95.
Second.
Questions on high school student activity? Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve elementary student activity expenses in the amount of $1,089.29.
Second.
Questions on elementary student activity? Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so before we leave finance, just a few other points to, you know, the preliminary expenditure budget that was discussed does not include any reductions to staff. Instead, we are proposing some new positions. Instead, we are proposing, um, some new positions, a nurse, high school teacher, additional teacher at Benson. Obviously, there's, um, projected to be, uh, big percentage increases in, in health insurance costs, potentially 16 or so percent to healthcare premiums. Insurance costs are going up. Um, at the last meeting, Casey Nicole Rice spoke about the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, the Finance Committee agreed that we are going to, uh, offer the, the partial funding necessary for that program, $86,500. So those are just some of the, the highlights in the initial expenditures that were presented to us. Any other questions about Finance Committee? All right. Central Office Report was included in the packet. Does anyone have any questions for the administrators? Or do any administrators like to, wish to highlight anything? Chris Benway?
I just wanted to highlight, um, November 16th, here at Fairhaven Elementary School, we'll be, um, showing the movie The Upstanders, uh, which is a movie about bullying and the impact that it had on a specific family, um, but also, um, it talks about bullying, cyberbullying, um, but not just on the negative components, also speaks to character building and relationship building and sort of strategies, um, to combat behaviors of bullying. So, we have pizza that'll be, uh, at 5:30, um, and then the movie starts at 6 o'clock, and there'll be, um, a Q and A session afterwards as well. Childcare will be provided if there are young folks, um, that have children, and the movie's appropriate for all those, uh, in grades five and up. So we certainly would encourage any of you that would like to attend, um, to please come. We also have the link that's been sent out to our, throughout our district of families. So if they want to view it privately, that is also an option for them. But we do have the public link going on, uh, Thursday night, so we would encourage you all to attend.
Chris, will students have an opportunity to see that during the day, during a school day, or not?
Um, the link is out there and available. We are not watching it as a group, uh, at this time. I don't think that those arrangements have been made, um, but it certainly is appropriate for all students, even if teachers, uh, wanted to, that's something that we can certainly make available. The link's open.
Any other questions regarding Central Office Report?
No, but thank you.
All right, uh, Agenda Item Number Eight is the Castleton Elementary School Board Report. I know Kim had typed up a little document there because the meeting that we were supposed to have in her building last month was canceled. Uh, Kim, is there anything you want to just highlight in your report?
I don't think so.
Okay, are there any questions for Kim? Thank you very much, Kim. Um, Number Nine, AOE Snapshots/Data Discussion. Brooke, I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, so, um, Casey and Walter are gonna do the presentation. However, the AOE snapshot portion of the presentation, we are not going to share tonight. We received communication from the Agency of Education on Thursday that that data is inaccurate across the state. So, um, we are not going to share it with you at this time. So we are going to focus on the Cognia scores and, um, as well as our internal assessment data. So, I'll let you see.
One slide and just see, let's see, because I did make copies. Do you want something in front of you, or can you see the slide?
I want something in front of me.
If you want a copy, take one. If you can see the slides, then enjoy the slides. Uh, so as Brooke just mentioned, in September, the annual snapshot that the Agency of Education shares with superintendents and then it's shared with the rest of the district, identifies kind of where school districts are as it relates to, um, academic indicators as identified through standardized assessment that had been S-BAC in the state of Vermont. And so, we get that information in September, and then I usually try to present in October. I was on the schedule for the last meeting, got kicked to this meeting. On November 9th, we got, as Brooke said, the email that just said, hey, these apologies, some of the information that was used to generate that snapshot, uh, wasn't as accurate as they thought. So I have a call later this week to kind of figure out where we are with our accuracy in some of the identifications that were made, um, to two of our schools. Uh, and I'll speak to kind of how it is, we already worked through whatever it is they might identify us, in areas of need improvement. Before I talk about this slide, something I enjoy immensely about working in this school district and looking at this school board, is there's a number of us who graduated from Vermont High Schools, and there's a number of you that have, uh, students that graduated from Vermont High Schools. One of the beautiful things about Vermont High Schools is there is not a test that determines whether or not you graduate from high school. So as we go through these slides and as we look at this data here, please know that some of your colleagues in this space might see themselves as successful because of what they do in the world today. And if they were to ta- have taken a test when they were in a ninth grader or in a 10th grader or 11th grader or 12th grader, they may or may not have been proficient, uh, on that assessment when they were one of those ages in a Vermont High School. I myself graduated from Middlebury High School. I will tell you, I probably wouldn't have taken the assessment that seriously, even though I should have, and my mom was a 43-year middle school educator. Uh, and so it may not have reflected on me as being a potentially successful adult. I wouldn't have you judge whether or not you think I'm successful, uh, but I just want that in the back of your mind as we kind of go through this. That what is unique and enjoyable about this state is we do not have a test that says you do or do not graduate from high school. And so we have students in our system that might not be proficient on an assessment like this, but are successful based on criteria you might use to deem someone being successful. We gave, for the first time, as did the rest of the state of Vermont, a new assessment. Uh, we are no longer giving the S-BAC, we're giving the VT cap put out by a company called Cognia. And to Walter's credit, Chris's credit, um, Chris Benway's credit, all the educators, Jared's here right now, he didn't administer it because he doesn't teach third graders. All of the, come on, play along with me, Jen's just... All the other educators here. Uh, we had never seen this assessment. Walter did a wonderful job putting together tutorials that we sent out, and we held sessions for any teacher that may have felt uncomfortable or nervous about how this assessment was going to go. Layered on top of that, the state let us know that they were going to come down and watch how we were administering the assessment. So to add a little bit of a pressure, uh, to Walter and others, there were some from the state walking around and making certain that we were, had the testing environment in this way that it was supposed to be organized or set up. So huge success that we administered it, um, successfully. We didn't get any demerits or any identification that our administration was not done well. And then as you go through and look at Slate Valley performance, um, compared to the state of Vermont and that conversation we were just having about being number 26 in your spending, not trying to say that there's a direct correlation between the money spent, but you could probably surmise some sort of connection there to then see how students, based on the educators that work in classrooms every day and the supports that, uh, students receive in different areas outside of a classroom as well as within a classroom, how they perform against peers throughout the state on this assessment. Yeah, Kurt?
Yeah, uh, Casey, was, was Brooke basically saying that that green column is not correct?
No.
No.
She's saying the Agency of Education snapshot, which is on their dashboard, is not accurate right now.
Okay, so the green column's correct.
It is.
As far as we know.
True, true point. Yeah. Good question. So, um, you know, this, from my perspective, should be celebrated, uh, giving the, the assessment for the first time. You can look at scores and where we match compared to other folks in the state. I'm not going to mention other school districts, but I have colleagues who are directors of curriculum throughout our region. We do share information, and I can tell you that we outperformed some, and we didn't perform as well as others. And then you can try, kind of draw some correlations between, uh, spending in those areas or free lunch populations or special ed populations, and you can start to see some patterns. Generally speaking, huge success from my perspective. And if you notice, when you get older into ninth grade, you might recognize that, that incentive to take something that might not really connect to your life as a ninth grader is something that we need to sort out. And it's not anything that we haven't experienced in the past. Uh, when we have given S-BAC in the past, sometimes we need to figure out with older students what might be an in- incentive for them to really perform to the level that they can perform. Because when you go through the actual individual student results, which Walter and I did, you'll see where students are in their programming in the high school and the grades being earned and PSAT scores, et cetera, and stuff doesn't really line up. So, uh, we have some work to do there. But aside from that, was I going to drive?
I, I think...
Slide two, Walt! So, uh, an area that the Agency of Education wants to make certain that we're paying attention to is the difference in historically marginalized students and historically non-marginalized students. And so what I need you to know, different from the previous slide, is internally, we look for students to grow. We have a number of students that will meet the expected rate of growth in one school year and be well below proficient. Last time we had a school board meeting and someone kind of asked me about the rate of improvement and the squeeze that we have, uh, in this 40% and giving like a class-wide intervention, that sort of thing. Throughout our system, we have students that we know who they are, and we know that they're expected to grow, but based on where we started working with them, going three to four to five grade levels in a year is not going to be something that we're probably going to be able to accomplish. We don't say that we kind of abandon all hope. It's just that we identi- we can recognize that we need to be reasonable in our expectations for students and as adults, kind of give ourselves some grace and make certain that we set reasonable goals for ourselves and for our students. Uh, so, in this historically underprivileged and historically privileged group, the Agency of Education will identify free and reduced lunch students and IEP students. So those say, those students are historically underprivileged. And you get in the conversation about why that is and what privilege means and what privilege doesn't mean. But what I want you to know, and I picked our two biggest elementary schools, is that we know individual students at the building level, and we identify how it is they're able to meet an expected year's worth of growth and what that performance is. And so we know who the students are that aren't meeting that mark, and we have plans in place to be able to support those students. And so going from that previous slide where it's talking about just proficiency and if you're on grade level or not, please know that we are trying to grow every student and that to say you're going to be proficient, and that's why I started with you graduating from high school, and some of us may not have been proficient. Your goal might be to grow a yearly, but a year and a half, or something above that. And so, it's important that you know that we have mechanisms and tools of which we hold ourselves accountable to be able to do this. And when the agency finally gets their kind of snapshot together, I feel very comfortable when they identify underprivileged groups that I can say to them, this is what we're doing, this is how we track those students, and they can ask me for whatever data or support they'd like. Um, we set this goal, we cut up here about 80% of our students, we have benchmark, or we have local data that lets us know that 80 is reasonable. Of course, we'd want it to be 100%, but we know from looking at data that 100, going from, say, 60% in this school to 100, excuse me, 100, might not be reasonable in a year. Next slide?
Quick question.
Yeah.
Okay, so, you showed us the previous, let's go back to previous.
The first one or the second one?
That one.
Yeah.
So, in these two schools, what percentage of the students are we looking at here?
So, EST students at CES, um, say 20. IEP students at CES, 25?
I can probably give you the exact numbers on this scale.
20 is pretty accurate on the EST, I think.
20 students?
On ESTs?
No, we have like 34 students on EST and about 70 on IEP.
I was completely off.
Those are our numbers at CES.
Because John was asking percentage, not numbers.
The Fairhaven grade, I believe, are about the same, 30-ish, but about 40 IEPs?
And how many students do you have total?
So if you just take CES...
We have 250 students and, um, there's 15 or 16 fewer at the Fairhaven grade.
So 250 in, say, 100...
But this represents about 40% of your students.
Depending on which column you're looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Nice math. The last time you said I could phone a friend when it was a math question. I didn't get that option this time.
Probably a smart move to just skip that stuff and go right.
Right, you do?
Okay, we're good for now.
Good, for now. And so this, uh, is what we use STAR360 as our means to track. Three times a year, we administer this in our elementary and middle schools, and we look at where we are in the fall, and that's where we try to provide a level of support for students so that they meet or exceed the 50th standard growth percentile, which is the expected growth in a year. And these are all students as it relates to reading. So, some students may have been at the 48th, some may have been at the 30th. And based on that previous slide where we see students that are on ESTs or IEPs, we know who these students are that potentially might not be meeting that, uh, goal. And then we're faced with what's an expected rate of improvement that's reasonable. So some students that are on, uh, an IEP or an EST plan might not be able to even meet the moderate expected rate of improvement, which would get you to that 50th percentile or above. And so, again, there's a story that we have, and, and we know who those students are, and we have personnel that work with them, and, and we're always trying to push ourselves and hold ourselves accountable in teams. Are we doing what we should be doing for the students? Next slide, Walt, please. This disaggregates the free and reduced lunch students from the non-free and reduced lunch students. You know, we mentioned Boys and Girls Club earlier. Uh, we talked a bit in Finance about, you know, including some part of the fee of going to the Boys and Girls Club within the local budget. Then we talked about the sliding scale for student, uh, students based on family incomes. And so, family income is something that's identified as an underprivileged group. And we think about the Boys and Girls Club, and we think about the summer, and we think about other ways to work with another entity to support students outside of the school day. Boys and Girls Club is a place that we have started to explore, and I shared that the last time we were together. Next slide, Walt. Math? Not much to say there, um, other than, again, we give this math and reading assessment three times a year. Uh, in the fall, we try to, you know, plan a 10 to 12-week intervention or set of supports for students that we feel we need to. And then we check in again in February with another assessment, and then in the spring. But we use the fall, the spring for that 50th growth to see, do we see the growth we expect in an entire school year? Walt, next. Subgroups. That's the last slide, right?
So which, which groups, which I, I can't really read.
Oh, I handed it, but that's why I asked John if you wanted...
I have, but it's still hard to read.
I thought I had your mic almost closed when you were talking to Cheryl about the graphs.
Graphs, count the one to your left is the non-free and reduced lunch, the right is free.
This is non-free and reduced lunch. That's free and reduced. So left, non-free and reduced lunch, right, free and reduced lunch. Same for re- it's the same pattern for reading and math.
Okay, thank you.
Who created the slides?
You're the one who...
Christina and Patty.
How are your staff reacting to the results of this testing?
So is this the end of last year?
Which, which te- which results?
Yeah, this is the end of last year.
The...
The front page.
Yeah, like, I guess the first page.
The Cognia, the first one?
Yeah, the Cognia.
I...
Must be hearing parents, right?
I personally haven't, uh, sent anything out that said, look at our scores and wow. Just kind of waiting for tonight.
They've been released to parents yet?
But they can be mailed home, and I know that some schools have mailed them home, um, maybe all. All of them, I'm getting head nuts. So, teachers must have seen them. So teachers must have seen them. We tried to use this snapshot and this data point as something to look at, but we do want schools and the definition of success for a student to be more than just a single assessment. So I think we celebrate, we look at it, we study, but I think we, we're back at it.
And we purposely said to teachers, parents, and students that it's a baseline year and just do your, do your best. There's nothing really to compare it to, and as Casey said, countywide, our scores compare pretty well to some of the other schools in the county.
Does each teacher get like a snapshot of how their class performs? Just so like, you know, like 10 years into it, when they do, can compare, can they see how they're doing?
Yeah, you get it broken down, like, I don't know if you got the mailing, but like I got it for my child who's in a Vermont school, and you see a breakdown of where they are, even if they were a three on the cognia, like how far they were from a four, and it shows what the skills are that they worked on and that sort of thing. So you get all that for the teacher perspective as well.
But I'd say right now, in the last few years, we've been really concentrating on the STAR 360 assessments and the growth scores. That's where, really where our focus has been.
Because we have access to the data more regularly and we use something called a curriculum-based measure, like in between assessments, we work with students and it goes through this system of STAR and you can track growth and see graphs. So in a 10 to 12 week cycle before students take it again, they can actually see their progress, whereas the cognia is once a year, we don't get it until the fall, those kids are already onto another grade level and so-
And it's also not all grade levels cognia, so-
Right.
Whereas, yeah.
And how, how, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I thought you said I was next.
I did.
The other, the other thing I would throw in there as far as the cognia is that I applaud Clay Valley District that you had no demerits and everything went smoothly in the testing. However, I do know that there were other schools that it did not go as smoothly and I think that that impacted a lot of results. So I just want to say that it's really had to just look at this and say, it's hard to make any kind of general statements about these results. And I think it's a baseline and that's where we should go. But my other question is, I'm just curious, third grade, are there less students?
Third grade, just in general in terms of performance?
Just in general because they're so, so much lower, I just wondered if the number, the actual N is smaller than other?
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
We, yep.
It's okay, I'm just, just curious. John?
Go back to your first, first slide there.
Yeah.
Okay, on average, students across the state are 50%. You know, we have, if you add them all up, you basically get 50% of our students are proficient.
Add them all up, you get 50%.
Yeah, look, okay.
That's 37.
Right. You've got some 57, some 47.
You can't do that though, I would, I would caution you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So still, how does the AOE feel about, you know, the statewide scores? I mean, it used to be where we could, you know, see them.
That's why I made this statement that I made at the start, right? They recognize that the philosophy of education that's promoted in the state of Vermont is one that's flexible, that's meant to support students. They want them to be literate, they want them to be able to do mathematics, but they recognize that there's a whole bunch of different pathways that students can go on. And so they hold us accountable to making certain that we have internal measures that lets them know that we're seeing students grow. But I think as you look as a whole, right, would the state be concerned that there's a problem, you know, statewide with math in third grade? No one has ever said that in general to me, right? It's mostly a concern about early literacy and how you can show that students have kind of an on-ramp to be able to do the other things that are expected. And early literacy would be pre-third grade. So, valid question, but I would take it as, I think, at least in this state, there's recognition that students are in different places and you're trying to grow them. And so locally, you should hold yourself accountable, do you have those tools and measures? And as a parent, can you go in and ask the principal or the teacher, can we talk about, you know, where my student is as it relates to math and science and reading and that sort of thing, that they have ways in which to talk about that with you?
And having lived in, well, still live and, and worked, worked in a high-stakes testing state like New York, we are pretty low stakes in terms of, of testing, and that is typically the messaging from the Agency of Education. It's more, you know, we have to do this because the federal governments require us to do this.
If everyone said you need to pass a test in sixth grade to go to seventh grade, I think you'd have a different set of numbers over here, right? And that's why I started where I started.
Yeah.
We have students that enter our system and go through our system, but we still have a responsibility to make certain that they're growing at rates that are appropriate for their growth based on their profile, their learner profile. Christine?
But the third, don't forget, the third grade is a product of the COVID years, and they started off kindergarten, first grade, second grade with, you know, staying home for a year. So, you know, it was very difficult for them, so you expect them to be lower than the other grades, I guess.
It's, it's hard to see growth when the state keeps changing the test.
That's why I think internal tools are what we talk about mostly across our system. Because, you know, it's just like the funding formula you were just talking about with finance, when things are changed and they're out of your control versus the things that are in your control.
Not only that, when we, we speak about the AOE snapshot and the fact that the data was incorrect, that we studied for weeks or, or months and to find out that that data's incorrect and we were given the-
Yeah, I mean, I sent you an email the first time, and I said, I was supposed to give a presentation in October, I just learned about this last week, I was pretty fortunate that I didn't have to go in front of my school board, although I got kicked to November so I could take those two slides out, because I wouldn't want to, you know, I don't, I need more information to know what they're about. But I know they're about marginalized and non-marginalized populations of students, but further details are needed on my end. Okay. That was me. I started the clap!
Would you like someone else to start the clap?
No, but like, yeah.
Ohio, Erin. That's the name.
Thanks, Casey.
Thank you.
... direct correlation to their test score.
Oh, wow, that was fun. I was stoked.
All right, everybody, we're on item number 10, contracts and 11 resignations. What's, one new contract and two resignations to act upon tonight. Julie?
I know, I'm getting into my computer that locked because Casey was so long.
Loud, I was loud.
That's because I feel like I'm teaching. I am.
Oh, long?
My computer locked. All right, so I'm doing, no, I'm contracts, right? Yeah, I got it. All right, so we have a new contract for Claire Officer, School Nurse, Benson Village School, $57,199, prorated salary for an annual of $72,375.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
Second. Any questions regarding the school nurse contract?
And this is a full-time, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing nothing, all those in favor of approving the contract, please say aye.
Aye. I like that you have to go see Ms. Officer. Anyway, it's kind of fun. All right, I take a motion to accept resignations for Kristen Harris, Spanish teacher, Fairhaven Union Middle High School, and Jason Masco, social emotional interventionist at Orwell Village School.
Questions? Do these people have contracts?
Yes.
Okay, does, where does that leave us with the contract when they're breaking the contract?
So it's, it's in the middle of the year. In Jason's case, he was offered an assistant principal position, and so typically when people are offered a promotion, I typically allow them to interview. So, and there really isn't necessarily a penalty in terms of health insurance that usually occurs if somebody resigns in August and have been on the health insurance July and August. So that's really when that comes, comes into play more so than, because they haven't worked all summer and were paying for a benefit. In this case, he has worked, so. Christie was a new hire. Weeks ago? A few weeks ago, the end of, end of September. Same, same situation, there's not really, I mean, we could charge them an advertising fee.
There's no licensing requirements to, does it tarnish their licensing or their record or we can't?
If they break, if they break the contract without permission.
Okay, so we're obviously giving them permission to resign, break the contract therefore.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Can you explain the Spanish teacher, though? I didn't really understand what she was saying in the letter. I-
I met with her today.
So she did write up a new resignation letter, did you share that?
I gave it to Tim, or Julie has it.
Essentially, she said that she would like to stay on until we find replacement to, to kind of help support us, she didn't want to leave us high and dry.
Is that in our best interest to allow her to stay?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
As like the foreign language department at this point, she is having a difficult time adjusting to going from KMS to a public school. And I think, I, I think that that is like a very reasonable kind of like breadth of not feeling comfortable. It's, it's too bad, but she is a great teacher and I hope she stays on for as long as, like, maybe she'll just stay.
Maybe. Yeah.
Are we giving exit interviews?
We give them a, yes, yes, we do, if they choose to participate in it. We always have.
Every single resignation gets a, gets an interview?
They get a letter?
They get an offer of an interview.
Yeah, it's a, it's a form that they fill out, yes.
And they interview with whom?
They could meet with me, some meet with me, or some just simply fill out the form and return it. And then some choose not to.
And then some meet with the foreign language department, which is me.
I do not give those to terminated employees, though.
All righty, so there's been a motion, correct, Julie? And was there a second?
Yes.
Yes, and are there any other questions regarding the two resignations? Hearing nothing, all those in favor of accepting those resignations, please say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? All right, next on the agenda is food service program update, is that?
Yep.
Cheryl?
That would be me.
Okay.
I just wanted to give you a couple of updates. We used to participate in the fresh fruit and vegetable program in, here in the school district. Some of our schools were eligible and some were not eligible, and that's based on total number of students that are free and reduced lunch eligible. But as other districts have not applied for fresh fruits and vegetables, they've lowered that threshold. So all our schools, all our elementary schools became eligible for fresh fruit, the fresh fruit and vegetable program. We put in an application sometime in October and we were approved, so we'll be receiving, we'll have an allocation, a total allocation of $52,800 for the school district. With each school, the smaller schools getting, elementaries getting around $7,000, $8,000, and our larger elementary CEOs, Fairhaven grade, getting $18,000. So we'll use those funds to make purchases of fresh fruits and vegetables. So the idea of the program is that it gives students a taste, an opportunity to taste fruits and vegetables they might not otherwise have an opportunity to try as part of their, the regular food program in the school district. So, you know, maybe papaya or mango or, you know, something tropical or, you know, other types of fruits and vegetables that they don't typically see. So it's a small portion that's served in the classroom and they get to try those. And the principals, I brought it up to the principals, we had had it a number of years ago, during COVID, it sort of went by the wayside, we were trying to fund it ourselves, that was becoming difficult, but when they lowered the fresh threshold and it appeared that they were all eligible, the principals definitely wanted us to take a shot at bringing that back. So we did, and so we have. So we'll see next year. Again, it's kind of because other schools didn't access some funds that they lowered it and we, all of our schools were able to access. So we'll see from year to year how that goes. And then the other thing I wanted to let you know is, we haven't really talked a lot about food service lately, but we had, a number of years ago, the school district adopted provision two, and so that was a program where the district decides that all students will be eligible for free meals. The state has also instituted universal meals, so they're, they're providing additional funding, so all students in all Vermont schools receive free meals. The federal government has lowered some thresholds, so now all our school districts, except for the high schools, so all four elementaries are eligible, they have community eligibility in the food service program. So it just means that it's a certain threshold that has been met because it has been lowered. Previously, only Benson and Fairhaven Grade School were meeting that community eligibility threshold, but now Castleton Elementary and Orwell Village School will meet it, and I believe that carries over to some of the summer programs, which would be a great benefit. So just wanted to let you know that. So we, all our, all four of the elementary schools are now participating in the community eligible program for our food service.
Are there any questions for Cheryl? Okay. Thank you, Cheryl. All right, number 13, AOE investigation. I guess I can provide a brief summary. Some on the board might be aware that a number of weeks ago, Kurt Hire requested that the AOE, open investigation into our superintendent, Brooke Farrell, concerning misconduct and neglect. Is that correct, Kurt?
Not exactly, but go on.
I am not privy to the details of how investigations work. The investigation was assigned to Robert Stafford, his title being Investigations and Emergency Coordinating Manager. I spoke to Mr. Stafford at the onset of this investigation and he just kind of gave me a brief overview of how the process works. Typically, when a request of this nature is made, he's required, I'm assuming by statute, to do due diligence to see if there are any grounds or basis to the, the request that's being made before at that point launching a more full-fledged investigation. So this was kind of a preliminary review. I believe there are interviews that he conducts with various stakeholders as part of his, his information gathering. It takes a number of weeks. And I received correspondence on October 30th from Mr. Stafford that he has concluded his preliminary investigation. They don't really go into, he doesn't really go into any details about what was alleged and what the findings were. He basically offers a, a short statement that they are not launching an investigation. You know, this is a private record, a personnel record that belongs to Brooke. She asked that I share it with the board and have it be recorded on record. So I will read this email from Robert Stafford, again dated Monday, October 30th. It- It reads, "Dear Superintendent Olson Farrell, I am writing to inform you that the Agency of Education is closing out licensing investigation LI dash two-three dash two-six-six without formal charges pursuant to statute, um, sixteen, VSA seventeen oh one, section B. Our office has reviewed the results of the investigation into these allegations and has determined that the investigation will be closed without taking action regarding your professional educator's license. Best wishes, Bob." So that's all you're gonna get. That's the results of the investigation. Um, I'd like that to be made a, a public record and, um, I guess I would entertain, um, questions if there are any, but obviously this is a sensitive issue. So I'm really not sure if I can answer any questions. I think we're free to, to read into this each how we, how we choose. Uh, certainly my interpretation as the, is that the allegations brought by Mr. Hire are baseless, but, uh, that's just my opinion. Looking around, not seeing anything further, I will move on. Okay? Okay, next, number fourteen, uh, school counselor presentation follow-up. Uh, we all recall at a meeting, at our meeting last month, the three school counselors were here, uh, and to present to the school board, um, you know, what they do, they introduce themselves, what they do, some of the things that they're tasked with, their day-to-day responsibilities, and there's been some fallout from that information. Uh, Principal Ben Worthing, a draft of the letter expressing those concerns. It was included in our board packet. I'll just read a few of the important sentences contained herein. Uh, Ben notes during this meeting, uh, October sixteenth, uh, FHU Counseling Department presented a report on their roles and responsibilities, as well as a detailed summary of the twenty-two, twenty-three senior class survey. This was requested by the board. Uh, his concern specifically is social media posts made by a board member disparaging the lists of roles and responsibilities shared by the counselors has raised concerns. The school counselor job description adopted by this school board on May twenty-first, twenty-eighteen aligns entirely with the content shared during that October sixteenth meeting. Uh, this in turn, uh, hampers Ben, uh, his efforts to establish a cohesive vision for the school. Uh, Ben notes, addressing such matters outside an open meeting forum on social media platforms where staff cannot engage in discussions with board and community members lacks the transparency vital for fostering trust within our school community. Uh, Ben explains, "I am committed to modeling respect, understanding, sensitivity and appreciation for all individuals, while also promoting professional ethics and values." Uh, and in closing, Ben states, "I appreciate your attention to this matter and your commitment to ensuring the well-being of our school." I guess Ben, you're here, if there's anything that you want to speak to or if you want to articulate in a different fashion, any of your concerns that you have.
Uh, no, I think, I think you hit it very well there, Tim. Thanks.
Okay. Um, I mean, I can open this up to discussion or comment, but certainly again Kurt, this is directed at you. Uh, the counselors were here, um, they made a presentation. Um, you know, I had concerns that were similar to yours really, and, and Roseanne, you expressed those yourself tonight in public comment, that, you know, are counselors spending too much of their time, uh, addressing behavioral needs and trauma as opposed to, you know, career readiness. Um, that's a legitimate concern. I voiced my questions, they explained. I think everyone was, uh, leaving here thinking that they heard the message and they were going to continue their good work. Then again, you go to social media, the job descriptions disparaging their performance and what they do.
Disparage anything.
And then I think perhaps potentially even solicit- soliciting services that, you know, to your own personal business.
You know, I haven't done that since I've been elected to the board. I haven't, I haven't, uh, picked up any clients from this district. I haven't tried to pick up any clients from this district. All I said was that the guidance department's busy, which is what they said, which is what you agreed to. I did not disparage anybody.
Well, I think a lot of people who read your posts might disagree with that. You may have taken some of those down already. But again, the point being Kurt, there's a way to address your concerns, you know, in a thoughtful, respectful, reasonable manner. You continue to go outside of what's expected in, of a school board member and the way you get your, your, your questions.
I got fourteen people lined against me when I come in here. So why even bother in here?
Bring it all on yourself.
Why even bother in here?
So, hey Tim, so, um.
And I, and before Julie, one more thing, I just, it's just, it continues to unsettle our school community and, and disrupt the progress that we're trying to make when you continue to make social media posts like this. You know, these counselors, they work hard. You know, they, they, they were understaffed for, for most of last year. They're now fully staffed. They're making progress. They're making mistakes. They're learning from those stakes. They're using the resources that they have.
You're being more disparaging right now than I was in my post. I, I just said they're busy. That's all I said.
Well, I would disagree with that.
Disagree away.
Go ahead Julie.
So, um, one thing that I have noticed over the years of working with high schools and high school students is that the role of the guidance counselor, and that's not what they are, and I want to make that clear in this statement. The role of the guidance counselor has significantly changed from when I was in high school. And I think from what a lot of parents who are my generation and maybe a little younger believe a guidance counselor should be. And I think that is, if you go to the Vermont State Counselors Association website, they have a big thing on there that says, guidance counselor, big circle with a red line through it, school counselor. They're trying desperately to change their image to under, to help people understand what they actually do in schools. And a while ago, I was thinking, oh, I want my master's degree. I would love to be a school counselor. I love working with high school students. I love, uh, every aspect of it. When I went on to Vermont State University's counseling program to be a school counselor, the entire coursework was counseling. The entire coursework was counseling. There is nothing in there about career. There is nothing in there about, uh, doing the SAT or the PSAT. It is literally a degree in counseling to be a school counselor. And I think that that, I think is, seems to be a lot of what the kind of feelings are that are traveling around about the school counseling office. Um, and I don't, I don't know how to change that. I just know that I have worked really hard to be respectful of their education, of what they're tasked to do with, what the state tasks them to do with, and understanding that their job is school counselor, not career. Now, it is a part of it. I'm not saying it's not a part of it. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying that the degree and what they're doing is no longer Mr. Evans at the high school, who I don't even know if anybody remembers Mr. Evans at the high school. It's no longer, you know, Sheila Poole at the high school. That's not the job anymore. It is a counseling position. And I, I just, I feel for them and their, their, um, balance that they're trying to create in their job with what they have, their degree and in what their expectations are, with what the school community is kind of expecting of them and how they kind of create that balance when they're A, understaffed and B, we've been in a mental health crisis for a number of years. So I just wanted to put that out there, that they are not guidance counselors. They are school counselors. And I would, I, I think they would appreciate if we really try to change that narrative and help support them in that way.
Does anyone else have any comments on the matter?
I guess my comment then is what do we do with these kids to help them with career counseling? Because it sounds like.
It's part of it, but it's a small part of it. Yeah, I, I hear you. I don't know how to answer that either.
I mean, a lot of it is about the students themselves being motivated to go after what they want. Uh, I mean, my experience with the school counselors who were understaffed when Sam was going through, um, working between Casey and the counselors and Sam, who was goal-driven. He got a program that really worked for him and with the help and the guidance from both sets, he was able to drive what he wanted to do and have them support him along the way. But it was really him in the car seat saying, this is what I want to do. So if students don't have that drive, you can't make the counselors and the, any of these people force them into choosing career paths.
Or self-advocacy.
I mean, I didn't go to a single one of his meetings. It was all Sam-driven. And if the students don't have that drive, nothing these people provide is going to make that happen.
Yeah, Ben.
Hey, may I?
Sure, go ahead Ben.
I, I guess, uh, to come full circle back to why I wrote that. My concern was, was, um, less about this conversation, more about, uh, I spend all day long having hard conversations. My counselors spend, they're in a lot of the hard conversations with me. They spend their whole day having hard conversations. Uh, and like Roseanne said, you know, I think this is a place to have those hard conversations and I don't ever want anyone to think that we are shying away from that. I think these are important conversations. I just want to make sure that they're happening here where they can be a part of it and where they can bring their, their input into the discussion. I just don't want it to get pushed into a direction where there isn't discussion from the most important stakeholders.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Uh, we will move on to listening tours. Um, so the board discussed this at the last meeting, you know, if to ha- you know, if to have, uh, if, if and when we have the listening tours, the timing of such, uh, sooner than later, do we want to get further into the budgeting process so we have some more concrete numbers? I think Julie and others may have talked about, uh, trying to integrate these meetings with, um, the respective municipal boards in our towns. Um, so I'm just circling back on this discussion. Uh, nothing's been determined at this point in time. Um, I know Lisa Cacciatore did, uh, take the time and I, I, I appreciate that. Uh, and just, um, kind of mapping out when various, uh, select board meetings are and what conflicts might exist and what times might be available to, to make those connections. So, um, it's our decision, our discussion.
Yeah, and I have all the select board meetings on my calendar now. Um, it appears Wednesday and Thursday night there aren't select board meetings. Majority are Mondays. Um, there's some Tuesday, but, um, how, how do you want to approach it? Because we need to get the flyers out and the advertising out soon.
So who does she intend the advertising to go to? Like a mass mailing to everybody? That's what she suggests?
Yes, postcard, like we've done in the past.
With like the, all the different dates that we would have them. So if you can't go to one, you could go to another.
Or, and I think the other question is virtual or in-person?
Well, I, I think they need to be in-person and I, I think we're too early. I'd like to at least have one more finance committee meeting.
Well, I'm thinking beginning of January.
I, I would agree with that. I think that at this stage now, um, you're, you're getting into Christmas and you're just not gonna, you're not gonna draw in until after the beginning of the year.
After the holiday.
And, um, that will allow us to hopefully have some numbers from the AOE on our student numbers. And we've got a better fix because, you know, it does no good to do a listening tour with some really, really super preliminary data and make statements and then show up at our information meeting would, and give them the total opposite. So I think that we do need to be a little further into this before we, we start talking about that.
People don't like to go to meetings. But I almost, I, I, I wish, in a perfect world, it'd be nice if we could just explain the process, the pieces of the process before we have to explain the numbers. Because once you hand somebody a piece of paper and it says twenty-six million dollars, their eyes go, twenty-six million dollars? And you kind of lose the, the pieces, parts that made up where, how we got where we were without giving numbers, right? Does see what I'm saying? Like how do, I know, I hear you.
Do you think people would listen to a podcast or vodcast?
I, oh, that's a good idea.
I would really love to have an in-person with a virtual component to it as well.
For the listening tour?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, I agree, Tim, that I think it's great to have that face-to-face, but how many people are online right now?
Right.
And how many people, and thank you very much for being here in person, but how many people are actually in person on a regular basis?
Yeah.
I feel that virtual, the virtual component has actually allowed for more voice from our constituents. So, anyway.
More people listening to what we have to say.
Yeah, maybe I shouldn't say more voice, but at least they have the opportunity to listen. Listen to the dialogue as opposed to just reading the minutes or something like that, which really doesn't have, you know, have the same flavor, so.
I think Facebook opens up a lot.
I mean, no, I'm not on it, so.
Well, a lot of people aren't in meetings.
So if we do a virtual, I mean, we could just have one meeting, right? And then it could be recorded. And for people who can't make it, either in-person or virtually, they could watch it.
Yeah, like the one that we went to, you could have very easily just set up a computer, you know, at the table and you could have had the virtual component to it. And then as you say, Christina, then go ahead and record it and have it available on, online.
So are you thinking to clarify offering three different, like we usually do, and having them be hybrid? Is that what I'm hearing?
Three different?
We do usually do a Castleton-Huberton, a West Haven-Fairhaven and a Benson-Orwell. That's what we typically do, but that doesn't mean we have to.
I don't know why we couldn't do one that encompasses all of them.
Or if you could do one that's just straight virtual and then the other one's in person too. Oh, Lisa's are hand-raised.
Alright, Lisa, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that last year, the reason I'm kind of pushing this was that, um, we were successful in getting the budget passed. And we did do the listening tours at the end of November, beginning of December, before the holidays set in. And it was, um, as somebody had mentioned, it was a little bit more, I think it might have been Julie said, it was explaining the budget process and some of the areas that it was kind of preparation for those big numbers that they're gonna get in the second, the second stage. It's too late now. I couldn't get the flyers done to have them. So I think at this point, we, we will have to wait. Um, because you're right, once you get to the holidays, it's gonna be too busy. But I just wanted to explain why Brooke and I were, you know, we were trying to stick to the schedule that seemed to be successful last year. And even though we didn't have a super turnout, we did have people come to all the listening tours. And it also was an opportunity for the community to ask questions. They were not just listening. Also, board members and, you know, administration were listening to the community and what their concerns were. So I just wanted to give a little, you know, reasoning why. We were just trying to stick with that schedule that we did last year. I have no problem with moving it to January, but, um, I do know that some people, uh, they have mentioned that they can't make it to the coffee and conversations. So, uh, the listening tours was the next kind of on the list of, you know, letting the community come and those being at night and the evening. Um, but Brooke and I have something that we're thinking about doing, you know, for that in the meantime anyway. So, um, that's all. That's the reason I raised my hand. As far as the virtual and in-person, I think that some people do like to come and speak in person and, you know, or to, and so I hope we can do both. And I also think it is important to go to the different towns, because not all people, the same people who don't like to go online and don't like to go virtually, of, often are the same people that don't really want to travel too far to have to, to attend.
That's my thought. Thank you.
Glenn?
I guess I would, I would really lobby for the, at least some in-personal, in-person, um, contact. I remember, and John has probably got those numbers tucked away somewheres because he was the, the minute taker. But there was one, remember the listening tour that we did on the town green? Because of, we had.
It had twenty-two people.
Yeah.
It'd be a little chilly to do that.
It would now. That was due to COVID because we were trying to spread out and I think our budget had already been defeated like twice that time. There was some really good conversation because there was a lot of, of back and forth. And I think with, with the virtual-only component to that, you miss out on that. Um, and we had. And we had, we had a pretty good spectrum. I mean, we had people with kids in the school that were there, right up through to people that were well past retirement age. So I think that stuff has got to be done in person. And. Yeah, and I even wonder about the, as much as I'll probably get bombarded, but. I almost think that doing one for each town is probably, you're going to get more interaction than you will combining towns.
Well, Hubbardton and Castleton are used to it.
Okay.
Fairhaven and West Haven are used to it, so probably just Benson or Orwell.
So.
Yeah, I mean, the trick will be just trying to figure out a night if you want all the central office.
Well, I'm going to do a Facebook listening tour, everybody's invited except Tim because he likes to insult me.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
So Kurt, I was going to ask, actually ask you, how would you bring Facebook into this? Because the only thing I really know about Facebook is Facebook Live, right? Which would be like in person, kind of like this, right? Facebook Live or making a post and then just having comment after comment after comment. What other way would there be to engage people? Because I do fear that negativity kind of, like you can't really have a conversation on Facebook. Like I feel like it's very easy for people to sit there and be like, well, I don't like that person. So I'm just going to say your idea is stupid. I'm not, you know what I mean? But so I don't feel like it's conversational. So is, like, what's your idea of doing Facebook?
Well, some people, some people get carried away. I pride myself in in being polite, not getting into name calling, not using horrible adjectives.
But you would just do a post and then engaging conversation underneath?
And and some people comment. And right now, the Supreme Court is is taking up whether a school board member can block somebody.
Saw that, or any official.
But if, if there's a, to use legal language, if there's a true threat or if there's slander. You know, or there's just something fighting words, I would take that down from my post.
So how?
Take that comment down.
How would a board of 18 or 15, how would we engage in conversation with a post? So I'm just, I'm wondering like, because I want to include everybody. And I know Facebook is a common place for for comments, but I just haven't found it very conversational.
I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't mind people joining in who don't agree with me. I really would.
That's not what I'm, that's not what I'm saying. I just don't find it conversational. It's one thing to disagree and say, hey, I have this point. It's another thing to. Do it without, you know what I mean, without courtesy. But I'm just saying, like, would it be like where we're all sitting here and we're all on a Slate Valley Facebook page? And we start a conversation and then who answers? And like, how would we bring Facebook into the process?
Well, it's, it's not, it's, what's the word I'm looking for when it's not all the same time?
Asynchronous?
Yes, it's asynchronous. So I think that's maybe your point.
So who's answering? Like who's answering? I mean, is Cheryl expect, would Cheryl be expected to get on and answer finance questions and Brooke get on? Like, I'm just trying to envision how we could do that.
There are no expectations, but, you know, I think anybody could can jump on. And there've been some district employees who have jumped on. And I, I think I've been polite to them. I certainly wouldn't want to retaliate against anybody who disagrees with me.
Right, but I'm just saying, like, as a listening tour, I just can't see that.
It's asynchronous.
I just can't see it as a tool.
Like coffee and conversations, the conversations were missing from that. And just it was a couple of people having coffee together, a few, three or four people, district employees, board members having. So there were no conversations there either.
Right, and you've never gone to.
In Orwell, we were much more interesting.
Yeah.
Actually, I saw that. I wanted to go.
So like the listening tours are, we're not just there to talk to ourselves. And we've had really good turnout in person to come to those and actually have conversations and we give them the budget like. I just, I just can't, I can see if it was Facebook Live, almost like a soccer game, right? Like somebody's videotaping the the group that's sitting there and people can comment underneath it. And then people who are there in that moment, because it's Facebook Live, could communicate about what's happening.
But they're not mutually exclusive, they can coexist. They're just different platforms, different forums.
And I'm just really struggling to wrap my brain around as a group, how we would use Facebook like that.
Because there's, there's no control.
Right.
Over who can comment. You're going to have people from even different countries that are going to come on there and say something. And there's usually people that come on and do say rude stuff and it. I don't think it's the right forum to do that.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand.
Might be that you can reach the public that way. It just doesn't seem like the right forum to do it.
For a conversation.
Right.
I guess I would also want to ask if, at what point when we reach the the specific number, can it be considered a quorum?
Right. Right, if we're all on there.
Right.
One, one thing that I, one point I've been trying to make is that alumni, even from way back, are stakeholders. And so a lot of the comments have come from alumni, even though they're not necessarily living currently in the district.
But are those alumni budget stakeholders? Because they're not voters, they don't live in the town, like.
No, but it doesn't, it doesn't harm anything them putting in their two cents.
Sometimes it does.
I live in a wealthy district in.
Maryland.
Maryland, for example. And I haven't been in the Fairhaven area for 25 years. I would argue that they really don't have a handle on what's going on. I mean, they can read what we post and things of that nature. But as far as the dialogue itself, I don't believe they have any. I mean, I have three brothers who graduated from the school and have never darkened the door and don't know a thing about it. And they don't live in the state and, you know, it's just. So I do think that we have to think about the forum because it is taxpayers. That's our audience that we want to, that we want to talk to.
Yeah, the other thing is, is graduating from a high school is a lot different than living in the community as a taxpayer. Like I graduated from Mount Ames, I can't speak at all. I live in the same state, but I can't speak at all to their budget, to their needs now.
That's what I'm saying, right?
And I wouldn't have paid attention then. So I don't think that they're.
Well, you, you personally can filter those comments. I mean, you can take any, any comments with a grain of salt. And we all interpret different comments differently.
Sure, I understand that. I'm just saying, what's the value of it? That's what I'm trying to say. We have limited time, limited resources, right? So what's the value of that? Because I too, like Julie, I, I'm fine with a platform, if you will, that works. I just, I disagree with you with the alumni. I mean, I'm sorry, you know, I.
And the thing is, is if you take one comment and run away with it and use it as a half truth and all of a sudden it's all over Facebook as a viral thing that really doesn't have anything to do with our school, our district, or our budget. But because somebody got on the platform during this listening tour, I, I just don't think Facebook is.
Do you have an example where that's happened with any of my posts?
I'm not saying that it has happened, Kurt. I'm saying that there's the potential for it to happen. And that I don't think our budget is the place to take chances. Especially with enough misinformation out there as it is.
As confusing as it can be.
As confusing as it can be.
I don't think I'm going to put anything about the budget because quite frankly, I mean, I'm on the finance committee and I don't understand any of it.
Well, that's what the listening tours are about.
Yeah, I know.
Budget, yeah.
I know, I know.
So I have two, two comments. First, back to Julie's point, I think that explaining the process is really important. Because like, I still am struggling to understand what is a CLA and how are, how are our students weighted? And so like to Brooke's point about a podcast, something that listen, that our taxpayers could listen to that explains those processes, I think would be awesome. Or even.
You can post that on Facebook.
Yes, or even links to information. Like, you know, perhaps Lisa could come up with a series of Facebook posts that talk about what the process is and then link to what them, where the information is that they can find it. If there's a video about CLA on the state website, like, don't make it easy for people to find the information. So if we're, if we're coming into budget season and we know that people are going to have questions about these specific things, then on the website and on Facebook, series of posts that talk about what all of those questions might be. And then guide people to that information quickly and easily so that I'm not, as a taxpayer, having to like Google CLA. What does it mean? How do I get there?
So then click on something.
Right, and then, and then also to Kurt's point, yes, there are a lot of people on Facebook and it's a great way to get information out there. But I think our posts should be targeted to share the information. And I, my personal opinion is on something that's this important is that people should come together as, as a community and not be on Facebook for them. I think that it's, it's an important conversation that should be had in person or virtually and not necessarily through Facebook. I mean, we could certainly do a Facebook Live. But we also have, you know, we already have a virtual recorded, you know, meeting and where there's chat. You know, people that maybe don't want to ask a question live can post it in chat, send it anonymously. Like just a lot, you know, perhaps have different ways that people can communicate their questions to us so that they are not feeling put on the spot.
I think Amy Lloyd does a really good job with her Facebook page presenting the information that Lisa comes up with and putting it out for all the parents to see the pictures. I think that's a very, very smart use of Facebook because the kids are very invested in seeing their pictures on Facebook. And she just puts the information out and lets people use it as they wish. And the comments, it's not an open discussion place. It's, you know, cute comments like, oh, this was really fun, you know, something like that. So I think that's a very good use of Facebook and putting the links on all of the school Facebook pages for these podcasts and everything else that people are talking about is a very good use of Facebook. But I don't think.
How about a picture of a Blue Room?
No, I'm just saying, that, that's, so we're talking about the budget though right now. I mean, that, that's, that's the conversation.
I thought we were talking about Facebook.
No, we're talking.
As a tool.
As a tool, for the budget.
About the budget.
Yeah.
All right, so our, our asks of Ms. Cacciatore are what? We plan to have hybrid virtual or hybrid listening tours in the month of January after the holidays, three of them. And certainly we would encourage her to, with our guidance, to, to be able to use the different social media platforms that the school hosts to, to push out relevant information that might be of aid to people as they begin to understand and engage in those conversations around.
I like that.
But what is, what is different this year about how we prepare our budget? You know, this is a different, a whole different thing with this weighted study and, and all that.
Can I just make one comment that I do in my central office reports? I don't know if you've noticed, I've been very intentionally breaking down and explaining all these different components. So those are a really good resource.
For Lisa.
For everybody.
But it's not available to the public though.
It is, but that's six layers deep.
Right. Put it in the Lakes region, we can put it in the local paper as well.
But I think what Janice was saying really merits, because to me, and you know, I will be the first to tell you that I get lost in technology. I mean, I, it's like squirrel, you know? Oh gee, I guess I should be reading this, you know? So I think it would be really helpful to have some kind of, and I'll call it the old fashioned like table of contents or FAQs or whatever you want to call it, but it's just like, and maybe it's the tid that Cheryl's put in there that we just, you know, Lisa just loads it into this one main kind of document. And that might be something to do with CLA or, you know, maybe it's something from the Agency of Education. You know, it could be these different things. But they're basically answering kind of the top 20 questions that people have about the budget. But it's super easy to go to on this one kind of, you know, one pager, if you will.
Do, do we have a, and I, I'm sorry for my lack of not knowing this, but is there a class that is like about journal, like videography or journalism or something like that?
You mean a high school classes?
Yeah, high school class.
Oh, no.
No.
What about finance?
Or finance.
Them to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great idea, yeah. I have no idea. Ben?
To just engage some of our students.
There is, yeah, no.
No.
Kind of like that where you have a couple of kids who are interested in that.
I don't know that would be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lisa and I also had an initial meeting with a PR company today to just talk about some different strategies we can use. And they're going to give us an initial proposal on that. So I have no idea if anything will come of it. I have no idea the cost, but just to talk about how we market things differently, so.
I think Lisa's wheels are turning.
Yeah, mine are turning too. All right, have we digested this one enough? Okay, second round, public comment. I'll start here with the in-person audience. Are there any additional public comments? Yes, Roseanne?
So I have a couple statements, but I had a question for Casey, if I might.
About his presentation?
Yes.
Go ahead.
We're, my understanding is that as a district, we're all free lunch. So, so how do you, I don't understand the breakdown.
We're provision two, so we provide students regardless of their socioeconomic status with access to breakfast and lunch. We still do have tools that we use, one of which is collecting information from guardians as to what their income level is, that sort of thing. And then the state provides us with resources where we can cross-reference our student enrollment with folks that receive Medicaid, different, different social services that allow us to identify students. So good point.
So, so students all eat for free.
Right.
Regardless of their eligibility.
Regardless of their economics.
Still know, if it wasn't for them all eating free, what their eligibility for meals would be? Would it be a free meal, a reduced meal, or would it be a paid meal? And that's because there are all these other things that we use that information for.
Okay. I was just under the impression that as a whole, we were a very poor school district. And so that confused me. Thank you.
Yeah.
Regarding the Facebook issue we were just talking about. I know that there are a couple of different pages for Fairhaven. And I'm assuming that some of the other towns would have something like Friends of Fairhaven. And.
That's true.
That might be a place where you can put the links.
Yep, yep.
To go to the places.
Yeah. That's some blubber.
And as well as asking the town if you might be able to put a link right on the town's.
Website.
Website.
Yeah.
Yeah, good idea, thank you.
Yeah.
So there's that. And then I wanted to respond what you were talking about, how your student was very involved and was, you know, right in there with the schedule. My daughter didn't have that opportunity with the person she had as her guidance counselor. And so. As I said, I, I see improvement in, in the department, just in the last year and a half.
My son, my son was very lucky because he had a number of other individuals who were working with him that he reached out to. So it's, it's a completely different situation. But he also struggled a great deal getting what he wanted. So it's, it's just six to one, half a dozen to the other.
I just, I, I just agree with him and.
John?
John?
John.
I think, and Julie, you and I. I think, and Julie, you and I have had this conversation.
We have.
I just think that they would be, you already have counselors.
I know. It's a challenge.
I just, I, these kids need guidance.
Yeah. 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 I mean, I'm not, I'm not in charge of the, what the state decides to call them, or what they decide to do, right? I mean, or the education that required to be one.
I, I think-
I know.
But why couldn't Fairhaven, Slate Valley, excuse me, sorry, Slate Valley, try to set a precedent for maybe the rest of the state, where our school counselors can put a little more time and effort into guiding these kids through their schedules, and going towards the career, helping them decide on a career that would be very good for them. So I, but anyway.
I think that's a lot of what the-
As the public comment, so I mean-
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you concluded with your comment, Roseanne?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry.
All right. Other pub, public comments here? Yes, introduce yourself.
Very quick. Vanessa Almody Orwell. You are so judicious and responsible with COVID money and everything else. And I'm so fiscally conservative in many ways. It was such an absolutely correct decision to support that Boys and Girls Club continuation. And I really want to thank you. I know that was, that is not easy in the wake of so many things that we need to spend money on. That program was such a great addition. We're in Orwell, and the Orwell and Benson communities especially, have been so blessed with that program. And to see it continue, there was a lot of fear in our community. I'm on the, help with the advisory committee, and I was in the listening tour, and gosh, or, or at that listening meeting, there was a lot of talk about fear of those programs going away. It was just such an absolutely correct use of that money. So thank you for doing that. And also, when Cheryl mentioned the, the fruits and vegetables, that was such a delight as well. Such a little thing, a great service. It goes way back, and I think Ms. Prohoda might remember, the kids in Benson used to call that Mrs. Obama's special fruit. They all thought that she was sending it directly to, might be the same program. So thanks, too, for doing that. I know it's a little bit of money, but it's really big when we have a lot of other things. But these are really, like, absolutely correct decisions, in my opinion, for what that's worth.
Very much. Other comments here in person?
Trying to make a public comment, or no?
No, I'm not doing that anymore.
Okay. Then I, I have a suggestion for an agenda for next time.
Okay. That's all, that's a few, few bullets down.
Yep.
All right. Turning to the virtual audience, are there any additional public comments? All right. Hearing nothing, we'll move on from public comment. Thanks for those participating. All right. Executive session, there, we do have a need for two executive sessions, both under a category of personnel. I would invite Brunk and Dillane to stay. I'd take a motion to that effect.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor of entering into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
I am.
All right. So we are out of executive session, back into public session. There is action to take from the just-concluded executive session. Is there a motion?
So I would like to, sorry, I'm going to restate. Given that conversation between the people in this room led us to put our full faith in our superintendent, Brooke, I always get it wrong, Olson, Farrell, or Farrell, Olson, whichever. We would like to support her financially in her, in her desire to-
Pursue?
Design, write a restraining order. Do I say?
That's it.
No.
To, to write a restraining order, to pay for all the course of costs associated with writing a restraining order, having a restraining.
Is that a motion, Patty?
Yes, that was a motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing nothing, all those in favor of passing, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Becca, just quickly, you said you had an agenda item?
It, it was covered.
It was covered. Okay. All right.
To, to give voice to what is going on, and maybe give him a forum to speak out what he's saying in Facebook, and give us a chance to actually respond to some of the things he's saying. But I don't think that's going to work.
No. Supporting our superintendent.
We just- All right. So looking for a motion to adjourn. So, second. All those in favor?
Aye.